Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the September tenth planning meeting of the Mobile County Commission. Uh, Dina?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
No one has signed in to speak this morning.
Okay, fantastic. Commissioner, do you want to do yours now?
Yes, yes. We have special guests with us today. You may or may not be aware that the month of September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month nationally, and what we have today in trying to help get the message out, the struggle that these young patients have, and to honor the lives of those who have lost their lives, and also their families, the healthcare workers that work so diligently to try to serve that childhood population, and researchers who are working to try to eradicate this terrible disease. Today, we have some special guests that I'd like to introduce. Dr. Emron is with USA Health and University Hospital. He is a pediatric oncologist and hematologist. And also, we have the Hardy family, who has joined us today. And their son, Christian, who is a pediatric oncology patient. And we would like to present a proclamation today to bring awareness to Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And if you could, if you'll come up and join us up front, and I know that we're all gonna appropriately distance ourselves and wear our masks. Commissioners, if you wanna join at the end, okay? Whatever you...
We got it. There we go. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Right there in the center.
Please just go to the center. Step to one side. You're welcome. We're so pleased to have you here today. Thank you for joining us. In observance of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, September twenty twenty, whereas September has been designated as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, to remember those who have lost their lives to cancer, and honor the courageous children who bring unwavering strength and optimism to their fight against cancer every single day. And whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, one in every two hundred and eighty-five children in the United States will be diagnosed by their twentieth birthday. More than ten thousand children are diagnosed with cancer annually in the United States. And whereas hundreds of health facilities and nonprofit organizations at the national level, like the American Childhood Cancer Organization, and at the local level, including USA Health Children's and Women's Hospital, USA Health Division of Pediatric Hematology and Oncology, Operation Superhero, conducted by the Mobile Police Department, SWAT, Camp Rappahoe, and Joy of Life, all help children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support. And whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently, dedicating their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer, and too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Mobile County Commission does hereby proclaim the month of September twenty twenty as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. In Mobile County, we encourage all residents to observe Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and court this cause that so deeply impacts families, every community across our country.
Thank you so much.
And I would like, if you would like to say a few words.
Sure.
You also, Christian, I don't know if you'd like to speak, but you are certainly welcome, you and your father.
This is to you, for your bravery and, uh, you know, events like that are really important to increase the awareness and the syndicated, uh, you know, in this family, you know, there exists an example for all of us, that anything may happen to us, and how, you know, we fight, you know, as a family, is what matters. Uh, I wish many more healthier years, uh, and a long life, you know, for this young man. Uh, congratulations a lot. Want to say something, son? No, okay, Mr. Reskey?
I would just like to thank the Commissioners for this proclamation, and to thank Dr. Emron for the great service that they provided for Christian. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
That's wrong with your picture now.
Yes. A social distancing thing. I think we could tell, yeah.
Kinda get behind here.
Thank you very much, for your time. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay. Glenn, would you like to get started?
Sure, Commissioner. Number one, consider approving list of claims. Number two, consider approving investment purchase of the county funds by the treasurer for August twenty twenty. Number three, consider approving correction in the August twenty-four twenty twenty minutes, Agenda Item Number Thirty-seven, to include relocation of the bowling voting precinct that was inadvertently... Number four, consider approving annual renewal of agreement with Heartland Payment Solutions doing business as Heartland School Schools, in amount of four hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents, for the period August first twenty twenty through July thirty-first twenty twenty-one, for the child nutrition program menu planning software support services for James T. Strickland Youth Center. Number five, consider approving renewal of one-year maintenance agreement with Sigma Office Systems, Inc., in amount of five thousand, for the period of September second twenty twenty through September first twenty twenty-one, for printers for probate court. Excuse me. Number six, consider approving application of VNS Two LLC for transfer of location for lounge retail liquor license. Number seven, consider approving contract with Veterans Recovery Resources in amount of one hundred thousand dollars from District Three funds for operational expenses. Number eight, excuse me?
There was no paperwork on Item Seven, just a couple-line request in our book. Okay, alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Number eight, consider approving contract with Pearl Haskew Elementary Parent Teacher Organization in amount of two thousand one forty-four seventy-five, from District Three funds to purchase technology equipment. Number nine, consider approving contract with Feeding the Golf Coast in amount of one thousand five hundred from District Three funds for a food drive in Irvington, Alabama. Number ten, consider approving termination of contract for veterinarian services with Erby Overton Veterinary Hospital PC, doing business as Overton Veterinary Hospital at Mobile County Ammo Shelter, by mutual agreement effective September fourteenth twenty twenty.
Do we have a replacement for that?
We have to put it out for good. We have to put it out for good, Commissioner, and have the store bear saying they need to terminate this.
Okay, we'll keep these folks in place until then? Wait, we... I'm sorry. So, we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep this service in place until then? We won't?
She can't have an assistant. She can't have anybody to...
Wow.
And she's burned her...
Yeah.
She's a terrible...
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure what that is.
Alright, we'll make it work. Thank you. Glenn?
Number eleven, consider approving contract with Bishop State Community College Foundation in amount of five hundred dollars from District One funds for its scholarship fund. Number twelve, consider approving application of SIR for lounge retail liquor license. Number thirteen, consider awarding bid for Americans with Disabilities Act upgrades at various buildings to tender construction, for a total bid of one million one hundred sixteen thousand three ninety-nine for Mobile County, for the Mobile County Commission. Number fourteen, consider approving Amendment Number One with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood, Inc., African Town Heritage House. The amendment will increase the contract by twenty-four thousand five hundred to provide enhanced civil engineering services for parking and other site improvements. The new total will be sixty-two thousand. Number fifteen, consider approving contract with the grounds for the rental of the Grand Ballroom, in an estimated amount of two thousand eight hundred, October twenty 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 through October twenty-four twenty twenty, and October thirty twenty twenty through October thirty-first twenty twenty, to conduct poll worker training in accordance with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Recommendations for Social Distancing Amid the COVID-nineteen Pandemic for Probate Court. Number sixteen, consider approving renewal of auxiliary audit agreement with Avenue Insights Analytics for audit services for business license fees, sales, and use tax, rental, lease tax, lodging tax, and other other tax designated by the county, for a one-year term for the License Commissioner's Office.
Can we just ask if there's a reason they only wanted to do one year? That is the question. Typically, we wouldn't have done three.
Number seventeen, consider holding a public hearing to consider recommendations from the Small Business Relief Grant Program Committee, to award grant to fifty-four local businesses that are experiencing financial hardships with the COVID-nineteen public health crisis located within Mobile County, Alabama, for the purpose of promoting the economic and industrial development of the county in accordance with Amendment Number Seven Seven Two of the Constitution of Alabama. Number eighteen, consider rewarding grants to the following fifty-four businesses in the following amounts, that are experiencing financial hardship with COVID-nineteen public health crisis located within Mobile County, for the purpose of promoting the economic and industrial development of the county in accordance with Amendment Number Seven Seven Two of the Constitution of Alabama.
And will this wind us up? Will this be all of our resources?
I think there's about four more that have come in.
There are, there are four more that have been approved or recommended by the chamber, and there's, the plan is to, there's a couple in the, that are awaiting completion of documents. But will still sources to cover? Yes, sir. I think we'll have not, not, there'll be a few dollars, perhaps fifty or sixty, will come back to the commission.
And it, and it will have assisted a hundred and fifteen total businesses.
Perhaps a few more when the final count comes in. And David Rogers will be here at the Monday meeting to update the commission, but that is correct. We'll have the next four, and if any more, come in at the next regular meeting, two weeks from Monday. That should wrap it.
Thank you.
Is that, is that Preston with us today?
That is Preston, both behind the mask.
I couldn't hardly recognize you, but Preston has been serving on the committee to help make, make commendations to the commission, and I just wanted to say thank you very much for your time and effort in doing that.
Preston, are we paying the people on that board too much money to do that job?
We should give them a raise.
We'll double it. How about that?
Number nineteen, consider approving termination of management operation and maintenance agreement with Mobile United Football Club, to oversee the management operation and maintenance of the Mobile County Sports Complex Soccer Fields, by mutual agreement of both parties, effective August thirty-first twenty twenty.
That should read, for accuracy, it should read Mobile County Soccer Complex.
Mobile County, oh, excuse me.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you will see later in the agenda that we have an agreement set to go forward with AFC Bill, and the pending final legal approval, and that we expect that to happen in about two to three weeks, when they are geared up and ready. And the BLM County during the transition is managing.
Thank you. Number twenty, consider approving contract with Alls Intermediate Parent Teachers Association in amount of seventy-three thousand dollars from District Three funds to go toward the completion of the playground, a purpose project. Twenty-one, consider approving contract with Citizens for a Better Grand Bay, Inc., in amount of twenty-five thousand from District Three funds for operational expenses from Grand Bay Senior Center. Twenty-two, consider approving professional services agreement with O'Neil Publishing in amount of six thousand dollars from District One funds, to provide digital platform and management and consultation services. Twenty-three, consider adopting a resolution authorizing relocation of the following polling site or the following precinct. Twenty-four, consider approving amending the twenty-nineteen capital improvement plan to add project in estimated cost as follows: two hundred and eleven thousand two fifteen thirty-seven upgrade vehicle fueling system and five Mobile County sites. This amendment creates project upgrade vehicle fueling system at five Mobile County sites and decreases the CIP twenty-nineteen dash zero-one-zero Virginia Street location by two hundred and eleven thousand two fifteen thirty-seven.
Are those new fuel pumps?
That was my dear, it was that, I'm not sure if you put it, it's not, and obviously, all that way behind it had the brains of, I'm not sure about that.
There's an antique museum somewhere. I'd love to get those palms.
And see, yeah, and everything's in Greek now. Oldamada reading is now in some language other than English.
You're telling on yourself, Alvin.
Twenty-five, consider approving recommendation of the Mobile County Board of Health to exempt thirteen organizations for a one-year exemption from paying food and lodging fees, effective October first twenty twenty through September thirtieth twenty twenty-one, as follows. Twenty-six...
I see those, I thought we got a call, Archbishop Rhodey saying they were closing St. Mirrith Home.
And Wilmer Hall as well. I thought, are those still operational?
We'll check on that, Commissioners. What was the first one?
St. Mirrith, Archdiocese of Mobile, St. Mirrith Home.
Oh, okay. We'll verify that.
I didn't know about Wilmer Hall.
I think so. I think I've read that.
Did they close?
I, I don't know what the situation is, whether it was just cut back or closing or...
That's not good.
That's why I was asking. I don't want to start anything if it's not accurate, if it's not read.
Twenty-six, consider adopting a resolution deleting precincts, polling places, number of ballot counters, ADA marque devices, and express vote assist terminals for November third twenty twenty general election. Twenty-seven, consider authorizing to advertise for bids for new parking lot for Mobile County Community Corrections Building. Twenty-eight, consider adopting a resolution approving holiday schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty twenty-one. Number twenty-nine, consider approving professional services agreement with Airwind, Inc., in estimated amount of nine thousand seven ninety-five for poll worker training video series for implementation of electronic poll book systems, in November third twenty twenty general election for probate court. Number thirty, consider adopting a resolution authorizing request to the Revenue Commissioner's Office at Michael Square Shopping Center location to dispose of certain items. Thirty-one, consider approving contract with B.C. Rain High School Parent Teacher Organization in amount of sixty-one thousand six fifty-nine twenty, from District Three funds for football program and media center. Thirty-two, consider approving professional services agreement with Susan J. Lee, M.S.R.D. L.D. for food service management consulting at James T. Strickland Center, for a term of one year, commencing October first twenty twenty and ending September thirtieth twenty twenty-one, at an hourly rate of sixty dollars, but not to exceed twelve thousand dollars. Thirty-three, consider approving professional services agreement with Lynn Young, M.D. for provision of medical care for juveniles at the James T. Strickland Youth Center, for a term of one year, commencing October first twenty twenty and ending September thirty twenty twenty-one, for the annual sum of thirty-two thousand.
There should be a Lynn as his first name, Young as his last. Here, it looks like one word.
Is that one, is that the last name?
Lynn Young is his last name.
Okay, I didn't know if that was the whole name.
No.
Thirty-four, consider approving change order with, number one, with Hughes Plumbing and Utility for Mount Vernon Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is the final summary change order, and we reduce the contract amount by six thousand six seventy-seven. Thirty-five, consider authorizing to advertise and receive bids for project GMSA twenty-one oh-five dash one A Escatabo Hollow Park and campground improvements, Phase One A. Thirty-six, consider approving amendment, five hundred dollar sponsorship with South Alabama Jag Girls, to change the use of funds from the Southern Belle Brunch and Bingo fundraiser, and the twenty-twenty football social fundraiser council due to COVID-nineteen, to an online auction fundraiser. Thirty-seven, approving sponsorship with Providence Hospital Foundation in amount of two thousand dollars from District Two funds for its Double Eagle sponsorship of the charity golf classic event. Thirty-eight, consider approving sponsorship with Senior Citizen Services, doing business as Via Health Fitness and Enrichment, in amount of one thousand five hundred from District One funds, for its twenty twenty giving campaign. Thirty-nine, approve costs for the twenty-twenty general election to be held November third twenty twenty, for the total amount of one hundred ninety-seven thousand one seventy-five, as follows. Number forty, consider approving rental contract with Mobile Popcorn Company, Inc., and Mobile Rentals LLC for rental of a tent to shade persons waiting for court hearings at James T. Strickland Youth Center due to COVID-nineteen, at a cost of four hundred eighty-five dollars per month, plus one-time delivery fee of one hundred sixty-five dollars. Forty-one, consider approving contract with Beryon Staffing Services for one hundred temporary polling technicians and their training for the general election twenty twenty in amount of thirty thousand six seventy-two for probate court. Forty-two, consider approving an event agreement with RPI Bell Air Mall LLC for the use of formal site for Forever Young, as a polling site for the November third twenty twenty general election, for the rental sum of one thousand dollars paid in advance, subject to final legal review. Forty-three, consider approving an agreement with SMG and the city of Mobile for the use of Mobile Civic Center exhibit area for poll worker training, for the twenty-twenty election cycle, October ninth through the fourteenth. Rental fee has been waived by the city, subject to final legal review. Forty-four, consider approving contract with McDonald to provide professional engineering services for project bioelectric water distribution system upgrades, Phase One, pending legal review. Number forty-five, consider adopting a shared space disposal between the Guardian Angel Foundation and the Mobile County Ammo Control, with the stipulation that agreement will be edited by the county legal department. Forty-six, consider rescind approved contract with Olive J. Dodge Elementary School, PTA, in amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred from District Two funds, Agenda Number Fourteen, in the December nine, two twenty nineteen minutes. Uh, number forty-seven, consider approving a professional service agreement with Airwind, Inc., to produce PSAs, as well as media schedules, specifically addressing identifying surrounding absentee voting for probate court. Commissioners, there may be some amendment to this. Mark Irwin is here to talk about that.
Good morning, Mark.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Judge had asked, and had sent an email to Jay about possibly up, giving an up-to amount on this to fifty-five, instead of the forty-five that was in the original paperwork, based on some communications and discussions that are ongoing related to the current litigation. I don't know how much of that needs to be discussed, but, you know, PSAs may be a result of some of those discussions. He wants some room without having to come back to the commission again, in the event we are going to produce a few more spots based on some of those negotiations.
And these funds also coming from the probate?
That's correct. It's under the current election budget.
Elections budget?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so up to fifty-five?
That's our request.
That's good.
Sir, you got anything you want to add? Okay, alright. I think we're good with that, Mark.
If we could make that notation.
Yes.
We could give Chad to provide, the proposal was for a month.
Thank you. Number forty-eight, consider approving the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five Mobile County Golf of Mexico Energy Security Act expansion plan. Forty-nine, consider approving...
One quick question, uh, I can't remember where I read it. I guess it was in here. Now, as far as the District Three funding, there were, that money is split equal among the three districts, correct? Who am I talking to here, Eddie?
Here.
Okay, and there's no commitments on District Three, other than I think on the blue wave? Were there any other commitments on District Three money?
It was just allocated across the, sorry, allocated across the projects, but we haven't committed to a specific project.
Okay, so I want to make sure my replacement's got the full rein of that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And that's, that plan is subject to change at any, at times, so that's just where we sit today, so we can always come back and make changes later.
Thank you. Forty-nine, consider making agreement with the University of South Alabama for internship program, for students in the School of Computing and Related Fields of Study, for the period October first twenty twenty through September thirtieth twenty twenty-one. For fifty, consider adopting resolution requiring employees who do not participate in LGHIP Wellness Screening Program to pay an additional fifty dollars per month, to be added to the employee share of the health insurance cost, effective January first twenty twenty-two and thereafter.
Why are we doing that? Good morning, Donna.
Good morning. Um, with the, the local government plan has changed their criteria for us to be able to get their preferred rates, um, which is a significant change for us, in that, you know, what they have required, uh, in the past, is that we, to get the preferred rates, was to have thirty percent participation in the wellness program, and then have five percent participation, five percent of our participation had to be retirees, because we offer retired coverage. And we've been able to get that for all these years, with this, for twenty twenty-two, they're changing the criteria. Uh, well, also, currently, we can get a, if we get eighty percent participation, we're, we were getting a ten-dollar per employee per month discount off of our premium. Um, but as of twenty twenty-two, they're going to eliminate the wellness screening discount of ten dollars per employee per month, and they're going to wrap that into the preferred rate. So, there, as of, for twenty twenty-two, they're going to require eight percent participation in the wellness screening, in order for us to qualify for the preferred rates. And currently, with our current participation, the difference in the, between preferred rates and standard rates is about one point eight million dollars, and the county, of course, is responsible for eighty percent of that, or has paid eighty percent of that, employs twenty percent. So, it would significantly increase costs to the county and the employees to go to the...
Good morning. But the local government plan has changed their criteria for us to be able to get their preferred rates, which is a significant change for us in that, you know, what they have required in the past is that we, to get the preferred rates, was to have thirty percent participation in the wellness program and then have five percent participation, five percent of our participation had to be retirees because we offer retired coverage. And we've been able to get that for all these years, but this, for two thousand and twenty-two, they're changing the criteria. Well, also, currently, we can get a, if we get eighty percent participation, we're, we were getting a ten dollar per employee per month discount off of our premium. But as of two thousand and twenty-two, they're going to eliminate the wellness screening discount of ten dollars per employee per month, and they're going to wrap that into the preferred rate. So there, as of, for two thousand and twenty-two, they're going to require eight percent participation in the wellness screening in order for us to qualify for the preferred rates. And currently, with our current participation, the difference in the, between preferred rates and standard rates is about one point eight million dollars. And the county, of course, is responsible for eighty percent of that, or has paid eighty percent of that, employs twenty percent. So it would significantly increase costs to the county and the employees to go to the standard rates. And because we have always had a difficult time getting eighty percent participation in the wellness screenings to get the discount, we felt like we needed to do something to help motivate our employees to get the screening. And, you know, for their well-being as well as the cost savings. And there will be many opportunities and places for employees to get their screenings, and they, there should be no reason that any employee should have to pay that extra fifty dollars unless they're just being really stubborn. But that, that's why, that's why it's on there. And the reason we have, we need you to vote on it to this, not today, but at the meeting now, is because we are currently screening for the two thousand and twenty-two discounts because they screened the year before.
Okay.
So that's why it's there.
Good.
Number fifty-one, consider approving contract with AFC Mobile for the management and operation of the Mobile County Soccer Complex, subject to final legal review. Fifty-two, consider adopting resolution creating the Mobile County Soccer Complex Advisory Council. Fifty-three, take long action on bids.
I just wanted to mention, fifty-two, the Advisory Council. I think administration has probably apprised you both, but that will be a seven-member council. It's strictly advisory. The sports authority director will be an ex officio member, part of that seven, and the idea is to, to just bring all the vested, you know, years of the complex to the table and make sure that, that if there's any input, anything that would help management and operating and managing the complex that-
So will that be take appointments from each commis, from each district?
You know, initially, it could be, but as we go forward, you know, it would be, that, you know, that's not handled in, it's really six members plus him, so we can handle it that way, certainly.
Okay. I just didn't know if there was another board that we had?
I think we're getting, we've been getting recommendations from a lot of the users, and if there are names that keep popping up, you know, it's, it's making sure that the soccer community feels comfortable with some of the people on board that they can go to, that if they have an issue, somebody they can talk to. So we, we felt like just trying to get feedback from the community to, to find out, you know, if, if there's persons' names that continue to, to be mentioned, that those might, might ones that initially we would, that we would put on, on the board.
I understand. Thank you.
So this, nobody's discussed this with me, just by this first, yeah. But if it's a board we're creating, it seems like somewhere it ought to say how the members will be appointed, but that's not-
Well, they're appointed by the commission. I mean, the recommendations are made, and the names will be put forward like on any other board, and the commission would approve those.
Okay. I see here in item three.
And now the officers, there's three officers, they would elect from among themselves.
And they'll elect their own officers within the, okay.
All right, Glenn. Number fifty-four, consider approving amendment, a minute lease between the county and Keep Mobile Beautiful to add additional space to the lease premises.
And that's also to extend the lease for twelve more months because I think the lease expires the end of September.
It's a self-renewal lease.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we don't need that language then.
And there's available space for them to extend?
My, my understanding is initially it was offered to them, and they didn't think they needed that, but now they think they do. They've got more supplies coming in.
And Commissioner, we have one add-on. First, consider adopting resolution in order authorize an issuance of up to thirty million dollars, principal amount of the limited obligation warrants Series two thousand and twenty, and Preston Bowles is here to speak on this.
Commissioners, the resolution before you is a little bit different than you typically have with respect to warrant issues, in that it sets the parameters under which these warrants can be sold. These warrants will be secured solely by the GOMESA revenue, as I think you know from previous conversations, and this resolution addresses that and pledges those revenues, or a percentage of those revenues, to secure those warrants. It then sets out a maximum, principal amount of thirty million dollars that you just heard, a maximum interest rate, maximum underwriters discount, and other important pricing terms that will be followed. And then, once the warrants are sold in the market, the purchase agreement will set those parameters. They'll be, you will then adopt an approving resolution at the time of your meeting, I'm sorry, this, this approving resolution, you won't need to adopt an approving resolution after the bond, after it's sold, which is what you typically do. And the reason of that is the underwriters feel that this market is a different market. There are very few buyers, and the market can shift, and they need more flexibility from a timing standpoint in order to best get the best rates and the best result for the county on these warrants. So they expect to be in the market relatively soon, but it could be, you know, missed by they are, and that would mess up the process by which you normally meet shortly after the sale to approve the sale of warrants. That's the principal difference in what you're doing here and what you normally do. The other, other difference that I'll mention is that because this is secured solely by pledged revenues, those GOMESA revenues, the, the funds are controlled more closely than they are with your general obligation debt, where it's really just an obligation of the county to make a payment out of its general funds. So those pledged revenues will go into a trust account or a series of trust accounts held by, by Regions Bank as trustee, and they will flow through and pay debt service and pay redemption amounts until the warrants are all paid off. That process, and I think you've probably heard this before, but that process with these GOMESA warrants is there's, there is no set principal amount that is due and payable. All payments are limited to the amount that is available from the pledged revenues. So there's no default if there's a shortfall. If, if there were no lease revenues from GOMESA program, there would be no payment of debt service. But you'll pay interest first, you'll fill up a debt service reserve fund that will be, they are available to pay interest if there's a shortfall. And then the principal payments are made only as money is available by redemption according to a schedule, or by redemption with some of the excess beyond that, assuming there isn't. And hopefully, those will be paid off sooner than the final maturity, which is expected to be two thousand and forty-five. But all of that is without risk to the, to the commission or to the county in terms of any shortfall in those revenues. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if I could, before we move on to the remainder of the agenda, if, if there is no objection and no procedural hurdle, would the commission consider going ahead and passing on item number three and item number twenty-three, which are the final two poll location changes that have been submitted? I think approval today would allow us to meet some public, public and deadlines by the weekend, which will allow these to be actually published next week as opposed to wait until Monday, which may make us have to wait the next week to get them in, in publication. I'm just, if there'd be nothing that would be objectionable to that, we would, we'd ask for you to consider both of those today so we can go ahead and get those out in publication.
Did you say three and twenty-three?
Yes, sir. Three is the correction from the previous list with Precinct eleven, and number twenty-three is the move for Precinct eighty-three from First Baptist Irvington to the First Evangelical Methodist Location.
I have no objection, and I will make the motion.
Second.
Thank you all very much.
And that, Glenn, that is for three and twenty-three.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Brian, you doing engineering?
Yes, sir.
All right. Make sure your mic's on there for me. All right, thank you.
Okay, let's see. Item number one, renewing contract with Earl Dudley for a one-year subscription to the INET Cores GPS Network, that's for all of our survey and activities. Item two, recommend authorizing acquisition of the property in acceptance of right-of-way deeds for the two projects listed. Item three, recommend renewing contract with the Coastal Weather Research Center for their forecast and warning services for a one-year period. Item four, recommend approving final plat of Creekside Estates Phase One and accept the roads in the subdivision for maintenance. Item five, recommend approving the final plat of Colleton Place Phase Four and accept the roads in the subdivision for maintenance. Item six, recommend approving preliminary and final plat of Jacklin Square, that's in Commission District Three, that is the Publix location, Commissioner, there at Cottage Hill and McFarland. And approving preliminary and final plat of Livingstone Estates Correction Plat, that's there at the McFarland Jeff Hamilton hood, southwest corner, that's in Commission District Three, and approving preliminary and final plat of Sunrise Subdivision, which is also in Commission District Three. Item seven, recommend awarding the bid for the round, round at Dawes Road, Jeff Hamilton Road to Hosey Weaver for their low bid. Item eight, recommend assigning a contract for preliminary engineering services for the segment of Three Knots Kroner Road from Schillinger's Road to McDonald Road to Michael Baker. We were able to negotiate that fee and approved by the Alabama Department of Transportation. Item nine, recommend approving reimbursement agreement for waterline facility relocation with M.A.O.S. on our widening and resurfacing of Dawes Road project.
Can I get you to hold just a second? Commissioners, back on six, six E, the second one there at Livingstone Estates, that is the one with the apartment complex, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and we have found out that is a low-income, what's the terminology? Somebody help me here, aging apartment complex?
Aging?
Yeah, what's this, the senior citizen, thank you.
Senior citizen?
I'm there. I can't even remember what it is. But, so, they have a meeting Saturday night. I'm, I'm going to be out of town, so I will miss the meeting, but they have a community meeting that, that they're going to address the community, so I don't think we're going to have any, any more problems with that. And I found out what it was actually for. Everyone seems to be certainly be in, in favor of it.
Good, okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Item ten, recommend authorizing to advertise and receive bids on our second rebuild Alabama project, that's the resurfacing of Solley Road from Three Knots Kroner up to Cottage Hill. Item eleven, recommend assigning a contract for professional engineering services for the Grand Farms Road West Waterline Relocation Fence Reset and Driveway Pipe Installation to Speaks and Associates. Item twelve, recommend assigning a contract for professional engineering services for the Creola Axis Loop Road North Project to Driven Engineering. That's one of our two thousand and twenty-one rebuild Alabama projects. Item thirteen, recommend assigning a contract for professional geotechnical engineering services to Southern Earth Sciences for that same project. Item fourteen, recommend assigning a contract for professional engineering services for the Sand Ridge Road Project to Civil Southeast. That is the, another project that we set up in our two thousand and twenty-one rebuild Alabama. Is that the Trans County rebuild Alabama? Yeah, that list that we approved a few weeks ago that we have to send to Montgomery Transportation Plan. Item fifteen, recommend assigning a contract for the geotechnical services for that same Sand Ridge Road Project to be technical engineering testing. Item sixteen, recommend approving right-of-way agreement for Track Twelve on one of our two thousand and eighteen page ago, McDavid Road project. Item seventeen, recommend approving right-of-way agreement for Track Seven on our Dawes Road project. Item eighteen, recommend approving right-of-way agreement for Track Thirteen on our McDonald Road additional lane project. Item nineteen, recommend approving right-of-way agreement for Track Twenty-One on one of our two thousand and eighteen page go projects. And then item twenty is recommend assigning a contract for professional geotechnical engineering services for one of our two thousand and four page-as-you-go projects, Sitchelnel Streets, Triumph Road to Terracotta Consultants.
Can you add an H to Triumph, please? Somehow or another, we dropped, the H dropped, it maybe dropped on our maps, I don't know, but I think the correct spelling is-
It's not Triumph?
Triumph. I believe that is correct.
First glance, I thought it was Trump.
Got a work going on, don't you?
It never slows down on the sixth floor. Brian, I got my page-as-you-go manuals, and I wish government-run, all government-run as smooth as that page-as-you-go plan. That is without a doubt. I don't know who's responsible for putting that together. I know you're responsible for what we received, obviously, over the last eight years I've been here, but this morning I received, very professional.
Who all from your department? Can, do you venture to name who, give the names of the people, or just want, give kudos to everybody?
You talking about putting that report together?
Well, you know, basically, put all the work-
Just about involves the entire department, Commissioner. I admit, it really does. That is, a lot of man hours go into producing-
Some woman hours, too.
You got, you got some good people, really good people.
We really do. I mean, if I were to fall off the end of the earth, this department would just keep on going.
And that's the sign of a great manager.
And Public Works has got it going, too, Ricky.
They do. Good.
Ricky's here, I forgot. We love Ricky, I'm just messing with you.
Are you saying that Ricky is forgettable?
No, he's not forgettable. I call Ricky odd hours.
Commissioner Carl doesn't have much larger to jab at y'all, so he's really taking advantage of it here.
All right, ladies, y'all got anything you want to add?
I do, I'd just like to announce a census awareness event and food distribution this Saturday at Lab App Stadium. We are preparing, feeding the Gulf Coast that's providing food for fifteen hundred families. It's raining or shine, we start right at nine o'clock, and if anyone is interested in volunteering, we need you there by eight. We also will have volunteers there to assist people with completing the census. We're going to do it safely, following all of the CDC protocols, and we're going to, they'll be done in, in the cars, and so that's how we plan to move it through. We've also been very fortunate to have, Sue's Shoe Station has given us some gift cards that we are going to raffle off this drop for anybody who completes their census form, their name will go into a basket, and we'll pull those out into their gun. And we have twenty HP laptops as well. So we're hoping that we can get our census count up. I just read on AL.com this morning that Alabama has the lowest response rate in the country.
Oh, no, really?
Which is not a good thing when we have a congressional seat on the line, not to mention all the other things, where we may lose representation. Second thing, on Sunday, Sunday is Census Sunday, and we're just encouraging congregations to please keep completing the census in front of, in front of your folk. That's it.
I think the cost is one, I heard one point four billion it will cost the state and federal revenues if we lose that, that congressional district from census. So that's important, needless to say, it's very important. You got anything? Real quickly, we want to make sure everyone knows- Real quickly, uh, we, we want to make sure everyone knows Billy Rooks, uh, he's over the Custodian, Custodian Department here in Government Plaza. Keep his family in your prayers during this time. His father has passed away, passed away September the first. Viewing will be this Friday, September the eleventh, from one to eight at Smalls Mortuary. I believe we all know where the, uh, address is at on South Broad Street. Mass requires graveside service on Saturday, September the twelfth, eleven to twelve, at Whispering Pine Cemetery in Eight Mile. So please keep Billy in, in our prayers. He's, he's obviously part of the family here, so troubling times. With nothing else, we will go and get back to work. Thank you, everyone, see you Monday.